For some of you, maybe it's pretty early. But in California, for instance. So the meeting of today, the answer with these networks and in general with the network of modeling simulation. There are many associations that probably if you attended the opening ceremony, you had opportunity to see. And we had here Marina Masai that was presenting, for instance, life. And that was originally a chapter of the Society for Computer Simulation. And he is the one of the affiliate of EuroSim. We have a simulation team, we have many one. Today we talk especially about two networks. There are MNSNet, Moderning Simulation Network, was established in 2001, 2002. When there was the president of SCS was Bernie Ziegler. That was from, it was, let me say, teaching in Tucson, Arizona. And that was even a great person for the story of the Society for Computer Simulation. Because at some points, SCS was in very big financial crisis. And Bernie was able by his research project to to refund in some way the the financial aspect. And I hope, John, if you will be the treasurer, you you will have a better luck with the boundary conditions. And MacLeod Institute of Simulation Science, that was established by Ralph von Singer, past president of SCS. Entitled to John MacLeod, but John MacLeod was still alive. In fact, I still remember that in the 50s, in the, sorry, in 2004, I feel. In 2004 or 2003, we organized with John MacLeod. The celebration for the 50 years of SCS in San Diego, where it was established. I will give you just a small note while we wait up to 14, 15. About the history of the Society for Computer Simulation. I'm not a real historian, but it is, there is a figure, there was at least a figure. That was Ralph von Singer, the historian of the Society for Computer Simulation. Any case, the founder of the Society for Moderning Simulation, that originally was called Society for Computer Simulation. That is the meaning of the acronym that is SCS, Society for Computer Simulation. Then evolved later on in the Society, the International Society for Computer Simulation. It was founded many, many years ago. I told you that 20 years ago around, we celebrate the 50 anniversary of summer computer simulation. Was the the major, the first major conference, is the oldest round. You know that we are arrived to the 18 edition of ITRIP-AM. But we have even older, we have 33, 33 edition of EMSS. But in reality, we have the summer computer simulation was much older in term of time. And in 2004, we celebrated in San Diego, 50. John MacLeod established it and it established in relation to his activity. He was a professional engineer, was working mostly for international agency in North America, mostly by for NASA. For the Navy in in San Diego at that time, and still there is power, I feel, John, we was working there, if I remember. And there was very active originally in modern simulation for this power is space center. Warfare Center, I feel, from, it is by the Navy, I feel, John, is it correct? Your audio is down, John. We don't hear your voice.
Yeah, the, it was called Spay War. Now, what they did was they woke up one morning and they said that Congress is giving trillions of dollars for information warfare. So they changed the name to Naval Information Warfare Center, but it was Spay War.
Yeah, exactly.
So that's, that was, that's what happened a couple of years ago. They just decided, well, might as well get money. They they used to, they used to be called Enrad and they've had various names. And then one day they woke up and found out that all the bureaucrats had moved from Washington to San Diego. And so that's why they called it Spay War, because the Spay War was the headquarters. And so they all moved, all of a sudden, we had 5,000 bureaucrats moved to San Diego and they changed the name. That's why Spay War came about. And then, as I said, they woke up another morning with information technology. Okay.
Okay, no problem. Any case, it's, John was working for the first simulation project. At the time, there was analog computer and there was mostly devoted to try to match. And the rockets and the first supersonic planes in early, in the 50s, very early, as I told you. And in fact, he was living in La Jolla, that is a part of San Diego, north of San Diego. Where he founded, it's established that the Society for Computer Simulation. And already in 54, something like that, he created quite a significant network, was very fast growing. And since then, he was still active up to the middle of 2000, 2005, 2006. Up to the moment unfortunately passed away with his wife, that were very always present in the SCS conference. And very active in the 80s and 70s, he was working with Club of Rome. About using mega global models, him, Vince Amico and Ben Clymer. On creating model for energy distribution over the globe, creating global model for the population, demographic, economics, etc. Pretty advanced, if we think about it, we are talking around 50 years ago, half a century. And despite the fact that the WLE was using technology that was, let me say, now we can consider pretty old. If you read his book, that was a very nice handbook on modern simulation. The concept that he present are still very, very valid. Today we talk about FEDAP, at the time, there was not FEDAP, but the key point, the data and model validation, the implementation, the conceptual modeling. All is there, okay? And he had very pragmatical approach, because he was a user to use the simulation to solve problem. So he don't look at simulation by itself, but as simulation as an investigation experimentation point. I mentioned John because the MacLeod Institute is entitled to him. I was appointed in 96 as a center director in Genoa. And then general director of the MacLeod, I feel, was in 2003. And so I was coordinating this network and then I move it to MNSNet. Currently, the the last director that was officially appointed for the John. The MacLeod Institute of Simulation Science was Andreas Javor. That was active in simulation since decades, was a professor in Budapest. We had a meeting with him and with other colleague when we organize ITRIP-AM in Budapest. That I feel, Marina, maybe you can correct me, was 2018 or 2000 Budapest? In 2018, he was retired since I feel a decade. He was connecting with other, bringing new, new blood in the area. But for, I have to mention that just this year, maybe I can share the screen. I feel you now, you see my screen?
Yes, we can.
This is Andreas Javor. Andreas Javor unfortunately passed away in April this year. And he was very, a very, a real gentleman and a big scientist. He was doing a lot of effort to to guarantee that modern simulation community could grow. Even during the time, because he was living, you know, in in Hungary, where there was a situation pretty oppressive. Up to the fall of the wall. And and so he was one of the scientists and the other side was keeping active. And was coming in the events in Western, even during the hard time they had after the crisis, because after the fall. Because there was a huge economic crisis over there. And he promoted within John, within the MacLeod Institute, the certificate. They are still active, still up operational, maybe not very active. But it's an opportunity for students that it was, if they submit through a MacLeod Center or MNSCenter. Their thesis, that could be a master, bachelor or PhD thesis in modern simulation. Is evaluated nationally, so there is no big issue in translating in English. Because if you have a center in Hungary and the thesis is in Hungarian, they can revisit. Then you have to add a summary, a presentation, that is an executive summary in English and an abstract initiation. That is processed by the world community, all the network. Traditionally, there are, I feel, 25 center and satellite center in MacLeod and 34 in MNSNet. They evaluate and then they deliver a certificate. That is in some way, a way to to credit the fact that this work is. This achievement in term of academic degree was significant for simulation community. There are, there is a list available of that. Let me move to a quick presentation about the MacLeod Institute of Simulation Science and MNSNet. In fact, I know that recently, the SCS is willing to restyle this one. We have some people around the table here, but, okay. So let me check how many people join now, seven. Okay, we have even somebody more, Marina Marimatz. Hi. Okay, so let me give you, hello, welcome.
Thank you.
So the MNSNet is a network that have, as MacLeod, the mission to create a repository for finding information. About educational material, research activity, etc. In fact, if you move on the website. That I have connected right now. And you look for, for instance, research educational project, there is a list of projects. It's very old and in fact, should be updated. But there is a quite significant list of project carried out by the different center from Perugia. Whether it was Marina, Mexico, Italia Flores, Marseille, Hamburg, Andreas Javor. Brazilian Center, Latvian Center, Genoa Center. V-Mask in Norfolk, Virginia, in North America. Calgary, Hamburg, Ottawa, and so on. At the same point, if you was going on education, you can find the course that in some way are touching modern simulation issues. So it's a good repository to get in touch with people. In fact, unfortunately, this kind of network has been downgraded in term of activity. Especially MacLeod have several center that has been, let me say. Mostly slowing down their activity, because maybe the professor was retiring. Or because there was a sub moving another, another university, another institute not carrying out. So there is for sure a potential over here. This is the list of MNS institutions, one is MacLeod, by the way, Arizona Center. Ottawa, the university in Beijing, that is a center that is very active by Professor Bo Li traditionally. But even now by Professor Ling Zhang, that is the, let me say, the heir, but it's it's very top scientist. By the way, spends some time in, even if it from Republic of China. It spent some time in Monterrey, carrying out research on the Naval Postgraduate School. We have the center in Calabria with Francesco Longo. We have the center in Marseille, in Auburn with Drew Hamilton. Keist, that probably you know, because was the winner of DARPA competition. Something like six year ago, about the most sophisticated anthropomorphic robot in the competition by the US. By the DARPA, there is Defense Research Project. The East Institute for Simulation and Training at UCF in Orlando. And many other center in Spain, V-Mask, and so on. The network, as you can see, distributed, in fact, even in Latin America, not only in North America, Europe, Asia. And we have different person that are currently involved. I'm one of that and we are willing to let it grow. We we need a new blood for sure. So if anybody of you is interested in this kind of activity. But to join the MacLeod Center is pretty easy, you need just to have, I remember, three members of this center. That could be anywhere, that belong, that are member of the Society for Computer Simulation. And then you make, you you should make an application and you can create such specific center. Or if you prefer, you can identify a center near to you and operate as satellite of that. Up to the moment you are moved to have a fully independent. The advantage is you receive material information, you are, your research and the course go on the common repository. And turn to be a nice opportunity on this one. And I believe there are our site on the web. We, let me say scientifically support events around. It's just required to prepare a report and many partner include many university all around. Even report could be available. Currently, one initiative I would like to mention, where MacLeod and MNSNet was being active. Since very long time is the CE, originally was called SmackDown. It was already introduced by Marina, the opening. CE is, was created by a joint venture, let me say. Originally by Priscilla Alfred, that was a former dean, vice dean of Yale University. That was working as manager in NASA at the Kennedy Space Center. And with the John Wayne, that was the president of Aegis Technology. A small, small for US standard, but is a very dynamic company in the sector of modern simulation, especially for defense application. They create as a free opportunity for all entities, university, company, etc. Willing to employ young engineers and scientists in interoperable simulation. It was created in order to diffuse interoperability. During ITRIP-AM, you realize that during the opening that the invited speaker was talking from different point of view. There was Alfredo Garro. There was Gregory Zakarievich and even Simon Taylor, that was working on this issue of interoperability. So the capability to connect together different models. This was something that happened as idea, starting in middle of the 90s. Because simulation, as I told you, MacLeod, John was creating the first models, first simulators. For analyzing and understanding how a supersonic flight, the fighter could fly. Or how it works a rocket. It was the era of space exploration, early phase of space exploration, early phase of supersonic and hypersonic. Playing not too much knowledge, too much expensive to be done just by testing prototype. And was using modern simulation to maximize the value of the test. But when we arrive in the 70s, 80s, there were very diffused the simulation, for instance, for flight. It was extensively used for for fly simulator. But it was a big limitation, because when you want to train a pilot, pilot of the Navy or the Air Force or whatever. Okay, the pilot usually from his service is already pretty skilled in fly. Okay, he should familiarize with the plane, but most of the training is not about how to fly. Most of the training is how to operate. And normally, at least until the last generation of fighting fighters. You was not flying by yourself, you fly within a wing, maybe a small wing, two, three plane. Now we have wings that are composed by two planes, like for instance, the F, the Raptor. They, or let me say, the John, the new J35, F35. That fly 100 mile, 120 mile one from the other one. So it's not very big wing in term of cooperation. But up to not many years ago, you was flying in a wing, you need to learn how to fly together. How to fly against the other one, etc. Now, in even in the 70s and then in the 80s, there was synthetic generated force, computer generated force. And so on, to simulate, let me say, opponents. But obviously, a real pilot is a much more challenging competitor of you. So the idea was, why we don't take this? Why, why we don't take this simulator that normally cost millions of dollars? Even at the time, probably a fight simulator, a fighter in the 80s was costing, I feel, easily 10 million dollars. Okay, now it could cost 80 million dollars, maybe more. You take one of that and you connect with another one and you fly together, the two pilots see each other. So they can learn to fly in a wing, they can fight one against the other one. Then you can simulate much more dynamic scenario. This started, it was originally a DARPA project and it was successful at the end of, let's say, in the 80s. And then it generate a standard that's still active, that is called DIS, Distributed Interactive Simulation. That is mostly a way to connect, pretty similar to what is used in massive multiplayer game. So you have a protocol and you exchange some data, so the position, the speed, if you fire. You define some rules, so for when I shoot, I decide if I eat you, you decide how much damage you take. That was working pretty good, but you have some hard limitation. Major limitation is, is the standard based on defining how we communicate. So if tomorrow we needed to say, okay, we have a new kind of plane. That is a quadricopter. Because before there was not, or there is a new kind of vehicle, that is an ectanoplank, okay? So it's like the monster of, produced by Russian, that such huge ship that is flying over the sea, if if it were. And you don't, you have to define, okay, what we will exchange. Okay, position, speed is fine, but I need to show the wing, the change geometry. I need to show the bay, how it open, so I have to redefine. But this obviously, if it's a main platform is evident. But if I have to introduce a new radio with different criteria to define how to show a cloud. That is used so to to confuse the enemies or some kind of smoke, etc. And it will take forever, because in my model, I will use particle. In John model, he will use volumes. And so if we needed to agree how what to exchange, it will take a lot. So in the middle of the 90s was decided to move forward with a new standard. That was still promoted by DOD, US Department of Defense, that was HLA, Level Architecture. That move a step forward, say, okay, we don't define the the standard in term of what we exchange. The protocol, the PDU, we define the service and you will call the service. So I will give you the way to define an object, its own attribute. And then when you create a new model, you can adapt, so it's not part of the standard. The standard is the language, is an object simplified approach. Where you have object, you have attribute, you have interaction and so on. It was pretty popular. Now what happened? It's interesting from a Claude point of view. In the middle of the, this standard turn to be, was released in 96. By the way, the representative of US Army standard responsible was in Europe, the same year. In that case, was in Genoa during the European Simulation Symposium. That now we call the European Modern Simulation Symposium in 96, to promote HLA. That was released just in June, that was here in September. There was a big effort, this this material was make available for everybody. But there was a big gap. The gap was you don't have scientist and engineer able to use HLA. Because was something new, obviously, you have in the University of Hamburg, University of Genoa, California State. You have in big company Lockheed Martin in Aegis Technology, that was working with simulation. But if I was Aegis Technology, I was looking for a young engineers. Not, no university was teaching such kind of stuff. There was not even real documentation, because as you can imagine, the military, John, excuse me. But the military was producing very, let me say, promotional material, something that you can write whatever you say. By using HLA, you improve a lot the efficiency of your simulator. And that's fine, but I need to know what is the service, how it works, how I manage time. So at that time, the US DOD was giving a contract to the California State University, Chico. That jointly with Genoa University, Hamburg University, developed the first set of all the educational material. That was made available for free for everybody want to download, especially to promote in university. So they can teach HLA, they can teach high level architecture, but even the concept of interoperability. That is much more than to make two, three, 200 system talk each other. Is to think that the model could interact even with part inside each other. It was going to just a directive, let me say, of the US Department of Defense. It was adopted by NATO on, within three years, something like that. But you know NATO involving all the country, even if it was reusing the concept of the DOD. It was taking a lot to get effectively used around in the different nation of NATO. Any case, there was a strong effort with CISO. CISO is the society that take care of interoperability, mostly for defining the standard. Was burning for DIS in, I feel, beginning of 90s, but maybe I'm wrong. But it make a huge effort in 2001, if I'm correct, the HLA turned to be a nitripli standard. That was released along the next year. But there was some kind of latency in adopting it, for several reason. People that always complain say that have low efficiency. Now you know. Personally, I feel the problem was not just the low efficiency, I mean, the system was improving along the time. I still remember that the first release by Peach, that is, now it's British Aerospace, BIE. But at that time, was a private company in Sweden, founded by the Swedish government. Because the, to to use HLA, you need the runtime infrastructure, there is a software. At the time, the software was released by private company under contract of the DOD. DOD was making the software free available, based on, let me say, clearance. Was not required, a security clearance, but was required an approval by the DOD to get this one. Obviously, the Swedish government and their company was producing simulator for overseas market. And they are neutral, they cannot be conditioned by approval by the US Department of Defense. And so they decided to develop their own. And Peach now, let me say, Peach and Mac are the best one. Mac was developing their RTI for the DOD. Peach was developing the first RTI, not for the DOD. And at the beginning, the RTI of Peach was not running on the network. Was just running on a single computer. So you can run two simulator in your single computer and interoperate. But you was not able to support distributed network. Obviously, because they was developed by night. But along the time, if you look, Peach is very, very advanced in term of RTI, it's very high performance. So they have all, efficiency was not the real reason. The reason is that HLA, High Level Architecture. But even if you don't use HLA, if you want to make model to interoperate, is a conceptual problem. I feel interoperability is much more a conceptual problem than a technological problem. I mean, technological problem is software, you study, you learn, you identify. But if I needed to connect a weather model with a model of operation, military operation. I needed to understand what is the mutual influence. So I needed to have a clear mind, I needed to understand how it works, the time management in the two reality. And so this in some way is something that could be very important to to create an effective approach. So what happened? Many company, especially company that was not in the beginning, developing solution for the DOD with HLA. They tried to keep their own, let me say, commercial, private solution for connecting simulator. Obviously, okay, this is fine, but obviously, they work just with their own system and so it's very closed approach. Obviously, okay, this is fine, but obviously, they work just with their own system and so it's very closed approach. So at some point, there was some kind of latency. And when we arrive in two thousand ten, there was a new release of the standard, that is what we call at the time, HLA evolved, that creates some more easy way to create the definition of the object, etc. And that was even harder for people to join, and was even harder for for find younger people, younger software developer, young engineer, scientist. So there was this initiative by Aegis Technology through our friend and even through Bill Wade and it was Rick Severinhaus at that time was the president of CISO, that was very promoting this initiative. And Priscilla Alfredi, and we decided to, I was involved too. We decided to think in a different way. Instead to do what we have done in the middle of the nineties, so to create a lot of slide, a lot of educational material, we say, let's start an initiative, like SmackDown, where university can join, can bring their simulator and they can federate their simulator with our own simulator. So they learn by doing. They don't, we don't provide educational material. Okay, there was educational material in some part. Maybe somebody was doing some education, but the great opportunity was learning by doing. And this was very successful. Two thousand ten, I feel, was the first year in Boston. We was hosted by MIT and before at the conference, NASA was bringing the computer over there. The student of the team of SmackDown, at that time the name was SmackDown. And one of the student was, there was a team from Marseille, at that time was in Marseille, coordinated by Greg and one team from Genoa and they worked together, there was over there, was the year of the earthquake in Japan. The team of Japan was not able to come due to the to the problem with Fukushima, tsunami and the nuclear accident. And in Boston, they arrived on Saturday, NASA technician mounted the computer and set up the network. On Sunday, they worked since sunrise to the sunset. They was already carried out by VPN test before. But live was the first time, two thousand ten, onsite. And on Monday, the system, the federation, with more than, I feel, twelve and fifteen different model, model of a shuttle, model of a lunar base, we was doing the where moon base, warehouse handling system for the cargoes. There was rover, there was something, Hooper that was jumping on sun, etc. There was the astronaut, there was the base infrastructure, etc. Satellite network was working altogether. In less than twenty-four hours, the system was operational. That if you think about defense project for million dollars, it could take months. And obviously, was a success of all the technicians that was mentoring. For sure, people like Zach from NASA was doing a great job. There was Mike Conroy that was coordinating, Priscilla was motivating, Bill Wade was doing great effort making available the software for free to the university in cooperation with Mac and with Peach, that was promoter of this one. Even Forward Seeing, that is another good company from Montreal in Canada. It was a success as was going for years and is still operational. Now, I would like to mention, today, we had the the opening, yesterday, we had the opening. And the keynote speaker was, where? Alfredo Garro. I was bringing Alfredo Garro in Tampa and I introduced it to SmackDown, he got enthusiastic, joined the team in Tampa, working. It was a long, I feel maybe it's even possible to see some picture, I don't know. If it is Tampa, 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 no? Okay, let me see. But any case, there was a long table where the older people was in a lane connected, plus the people remotely. Alfredo was joined there, was good programming, was learning by doing the HLA. And then he was great with that, he create a small team that was going in Orlando directly and then they was doing more than in Orlando, they was going in Houston, that was joining the Houston Johnson Center. And they developed a command and control module to supervise the CE exercise and he was one of the speaker. Gregory Zakariaevich, I mentioned before, was there since Boston, two thousand ten, is SmackDown. Has been involved even early in project in HLA. But his student was doing great job along the years, still active. And Simon Taylor, he was feeling, I feel like he joined in two thousand fourteen, maybe two thousand fifteen on CE and was creating even good contribution from United Kingdom. So that's a very good example of this kind of initiative. It was not done by McCleod Institute, nor by MNSNet, but we was on the loop. And the spirit, I feel, of John McCleod is there, the spirit of John and Suzette is there. And this is something that we have to keep always in mind, because some of the concept that he expressed, like when I teach, I always mention the concept of Simuland. It's concept that now is mostly gone. But he was saying, we don't know the real system usually. When we develop a new system, at that time maybe a new rocket. But even now, when we develop a new system too, I was yesterday in the United Nations for full development program. You develop a new solution for fighting the desertification of an area. You don't know exactly how it works, some of the aspects are known, but other no. And while you create the model, you create based on your feeling or your knowledge of this system. But it's not a real system. Along the development of the project, of the simulation project, probably by doing the model, probably you realize there are inconsistency and maybe you learn that the real system doesn't work as you expect. Maybe you learned that sea water infiltrate underground and contaminated the water that normally is fresh water over there. And maybe you studied that a system that you designed it to come to find that by dripping system underground, maybe more or less effective. So these are all aspects that if you do real simulation, you learn. And this is a major value, but it's a value if we create a network. Because otherwise, when I learned, I learned by myself. But for instance, Javier should relearn if I don't transfer this knowledge. And vice versa, the model about environment and and whether that is developed by John, it's his own heritage, but if somebody don't have access to this one, he don't have opportunity to talk, interact with him, it keeps some way closed. So I feel this is a very good example of the importance of this network. I hope we can revitalize. I hope that SES will use this network, because it's a big resource and we needed to keep on the loop, old people together with young people, because it was, I feel, General McArthur, the hero from Pacific, that was used to say then elder is not a period of life, but is a state of mind. And you have John McCleod when he was on the last year, I still remember. He had some health problem, but he was organizing his party in his house. We were sitting together with young scientists, just completely, was doing the PhD, mature professor, him, and we was thinking, talking about simulation. With Vince Amico, we wrote down in two thousand one, I feel, a joint paper about the criticality of money simulation, that's still a reference point. So maybe they are not up to date on the new technology, but they have a clear understanding of the conceptual model requirement and they can give a great conceptual transfer to the new generation. We need to use that among young people, among elder, but not elder in term of age. Maybe elder in term of age, but not in term of mind, and I feel this is an important aspect. So I feel this provide you an overview. And if you have any comment, I will be very glad to talk and to see if we can do further development. Any comment?
Well, you have to remember that, as you were saying, in the nineties, they were, it was the runtime infrastructure was, was just starting. It hadn't evolved yet and things like that. And so it took a lot to get models to talk to each other. For example, you'd have an army model, an air force model, a navy model and they'd they'd have different requirements. So at that point, you were, you were just shoveling, you were handing off something to another model and all you had to do was worry about the time advance. And then you'd worry about, you know, the position, the location, the basic things that HLA would do that. And sometimes, one problem was that you'd, you'd get a requirement to be HLA compliant and then all you really had to do was say, well, I can, I can exchange position with a federate, you know, with, you know, with a controller, RTI. And then, so now I'm compliant. And that was that. So that was, that was one of the problems in the nineties. I've also noticed that I, I suspect NASA uses RTI and HLA a lot. Although that may be just my opinion, but I don't know if that's completely true.
They use quite, I mean, they are very good team, as I mentioned, the team from Houston Center, Johnson Center with Zach developers. They are doing a great job and with this simulation exploratory team, the experience, they transferred a lot of, their expertise on HLA to the university and students, they do pretty nice. And it's very challenging, because as you told, one of issue of HLA, that is, let me say, little bit of revolution respect DIS, is that you have the possibility to manage time. So you can manage the time, synchronize different system. In DIS, there is no real synchronization. It's supposed that everybody, everybody run real time and so you synchronize each one by your clock and then you get synchronized. But obviously, this doesn't consider computational issue that could slow down some of the part. But for training simulation, not very fast system, could be fine. But the point exactly as you say, John, is that a lot of people was not able to master the concept of time management in a federation. So if you take a lot of existing federation nowadays, they don't manage time. They just run real time synchronizing with the clock. That is a solution that is very barbaric. Now theoretically is wrong. Practically, as I told you, if we talk about two ships that sails, when the simulators go down, maybe you lose one, two second. Now a ship in a second, we travel fifteen meter. Probably is not very drastic and important, especially for a training. But you know, it's, in the cases, maybe you don't accumulate one second delay, maybe you accumulate half a half a second, seven meter, okay. But you probably don't care exactly if you are eating at that point or the other point. But conceptually is incorrect. And this is due for two reasons, I feel. First of all, people don't have, don't understand clearly what means the time management. Because for some model, you really need the time management. Because if I have a environmental model, that show me how the battle space at sea change over time and I have to cross with a submarine that sails around, they have different time horizon, I needed to make them consistent, you know. The second problem is that many times, that simulator that we use in application are developed by company, institution, etc., they keep it closed. And if it's closed, you cannot put hands be inside. Now, if you needed to extract a value, normally you can extract the value with some kind of system. But if you want to control the time, slow down, say to hold on, restart, it's very hard. And so in general, what they say, say, okay, let's do real time simulation, that's good for training. Let's do real time simulation, we synchronize each one with his own clock, computer clock, and then considering that on the earth, despite relativity, all the clocks move at the same speed, we are synchronized. The only point is synchronization point, but this could be achieved even over the phone, if you want to use all technology. Any case, the problem is in reality that this is a huge limitation. Because don't allow you to run fast time simulator that for capability assessment or for reverse engineering is fundamental. And this is a major added value if you learn to use this one. And then if you are able to develop your own simulator and put control over the time.
Now, I just thought I'd mention that for a long time, Naval Postgraduate School up in Monterey, if you remember, there was a conference in Monterey. And they have something called the Moves Institute. I forget what moves, it's, it's, it's another acronym. And they have a DIS, HLA, VRML implementation. So that was the virtual reality when you for all those people living in the second millennium of the modern age, instead of the third millennium of the modern age, it was VRML and then they some of the companies that were doing virtual reality went bankrupt. There was a conference and they stranded all their conference attendees in Europe, you know, in Germany someplace. And there was this big massacre. And then what happened is they woke up the next day, just like Nywic woke up the next day for information assurance. And they suddenly started chanting XML, XML. So then they have this thing called X3D. So I suspect there's still sort of a, an HL, HLA interface for the expensive 3D. The problem is, is that there's the problem with graphics and 3D graphics and virtual reality is that everybody thinks they can make money off of this. And so for years, they, they started beating each other up. So it was this thing called U3D and then there was something called Calata for the game industry and stuff like that. And they would try and it was a whole bunch of six hundred pound gorillas trying to, you know, it was like Donkey Kong, you know, the game Donkey Kong. So they were throwing flaming barrels down at each other. And it turns out that if you, if you think that federates and interoperability is bad, imagine, you know, a trillion polygons thrown into all of that, you know, so they they wanted, if you want real, really realistic system, you know, very, you know, a virtual reality, you know, system that's very sophisticated. It's, it's very complex and then I think one of the problems was that I, I don't mind clouds, but I think that clouds have have retarded things like federations, you know, and model simulations. There's a lot of use of the cloud now. But it's, they're, they're just trying to make, make money and people are conscious on money. It's obvious that that simulation team gets a lot of funding to solve, you know, real problems. But then if you, they've never, they, there's, there's never been, you don't have a you don't have a virtual world on Amazon Web Services or something like that. You don't have two million people, teenagers, you know, hanging out in a virtual, in a virtual world because it's much too complicated. And there's, all the funding is, is in is in Donkey Kong fights, things like that. So that's a, that's a problem. But they, they still have that, I mean, it's still at you know, Naval Postgraduate School. And when we go to graphics conferences, we see people from, and you know, Naval Postgraduate School and other places. And, you know, they're, they're trying to trying to solve the problem. It's just that it's, now you've got extremely complicated, realistic systems trying to interoperate and then, and then you And then, and then you have these giant virtual reality scenes that you, that you're trying to add to it. Now you have social media, but what is social media? It's a tweet. You got little tweets running around loose. And that's just text. It's not two D or three D or four D or five D or something like that. It's, it's just a bunch of tweets, and then they have videos and things like that. But they don't have, there's, there's no three D Facebook, basically. There's no three D Twitter. And it's all, it's all very, very, very complicated. And they haven't figured it all out just because of the complexity. And then, you know, so that's, that's one problem that I've noticed in the graphics industry. So, okay, I can keep on talking. But, you know, it's, I think it's sad that everybody's trying to slaughter each other, you know. They've been doing it for years and stuff. I mean, you know. And the cloud people are still trying to slaughter each other as you were, versus Amazon Web Service. They're trying to, you know, gut each other, you know. There's, there's probably people at a, a meeting right now thinking of how they can gut, you know, Microsoft can gut a Amazon. And Amazon is having a meeting right now, probably, with thirteen or fourteen people, maybe fifteen, thinking about how they can gut Microsoft and stuff like that. And then Facebook is probably trying to think of how they can acquire more social media, you know, things and destroy their competition. But, you know, and one, I, one reason I think is that it's a problem is that nobody has an incentive to, to implement I P V six. And that's, so if you, if you, and I suspect we've run out of IPs. So everybody's reusing the local, you know, they're, they're doing some sort of clever thing with their, in Southern California, it's there's something called Cox Cable. They, and A T and T, they, they have their own IP networks. And then they redirect everything. But there's only so many IPs. And there's always a possibility that every computer at simulation team possibly has an I P V six address. But then, does the, does your university actually really connect all its computers to I P V six via I P V six? And then once you go out to your favorite cable company, I can't, I can't really use I P V six on there. So you can't, you have to rely on, on, on cloud services. And they're not, they don't think for the future. They only think about money. So they don't think about the future and interoperability and, and how to, you know, solve problems and modeling and simulation and computer graphics. Okay, so I'm done ranting. Okay. So what's up, Agostino? Oh, by the way, now that you got me on graphics, I three M is a, is a European, you know, event. And there's something called Eurographics. That's the European computer graphics thing. And it would probably be, because you, you do a lot of computer graphics in your moon base and things like that. And we're using the game people who show up at the computer graphics conferences and stuff. And now we have Nvidia. The GPUs have gotten to the point where, where you can actually do machine learning and, and things like that. It's only been about five or six years since you've had big enough GPU clusters to actually do Bayesian, use Bayes theorem and stuff. So, but I was thinking that we might try and initiate a collaboration with Eurographics organization.
It could be interesting to see opportunity. By the way, let's try to go through the table if there is any comment even from the other people. Maybe we can go through the list in the order provided by teams. Caterina, Caterina Fusto, do you have any comment? Or Xavier? Any comment, Xavier?
Where there would be a lot of things to comment on. Just, I could say, for example, the part of you said about interoperability and the C event, that I have the honor to participate this year. And actually, it was great. I was not, I already knew it beforehand. But after participating, experimenting, and also struggling with code, it was nice to learn those things. As you said, the learn by doing. A company with material, it's, it's, it's great for this kind of things which, apart from that, are not taught, I guess, in universities and are not that known outside the field. So, yeah.
So what was the hardest part from you to coordinate your federate with that one? What is, was the lesson learned that you get in order to make it work with that one?
Well, as this year, we tried to connect a simulator in Unity and then tried to connect it to the HLA Federation. But Unity is in another programming language, which is not either Java or C plus plus, which are the ones that, the R T I that was speech manages. That was the most difficult part. And Kirill was also very great at doing it and accomplishing it because we had to develop that gateway, that bridge between R T I and Unity three D. So in the end, we were simulating something. And actually, we could even simulate it with the level of accuracy and precision by taking into account many factors. We didn't do that, of course, but we could have done that with more time. But, and then we had to send data to a, let's say, one purpose program in charge of translating that data to a thing that the R T I could manage. So that was actually the hardest part. And it was very nice how to, let's say, work it around.
Very good. Thank you very much. So, and what about maybe Rina Mari Maza? Do you like to say something?
Well, yes, actually, I would like to say that my perspective is from, I'll turn on the camera here. My perspective is a bit more like ground compared to yours because you have spoken in things at a very high level, and I've been doing some learning listening to you. So I'd like to, first of all, express my appreciation for being able to participate in this reunion. It's a pleasure. So many of the things I did for, so thank you, first of all. Thank you for that. And as for an operational point of view, well, I agree with, with all the things you said about HLA Federation, the importance, and how in some measure they are underestimated in the, in some academic environments. Actually, I thought that, I mean, everybody appreciated the results of participating at the SmackDown at the Sea experience. But on the way to these results, it was like, it was hard to get people's attention. So I don't, I don't think they really realize the benefits of simulation, of all the neighboring technologies and methodologies. The sad thing is that, what you said is probably true in every environment. I mean, people perhaps are too busy slaughtering yourself, themselves as Professor Richardson said. And that is, I think that's the saddest part and perhaps the saddest takeaway from what I've heard and from what I have personally experienced. So I'm just going to try to, like, contribute to changing that from an operational point of view. And of course, I have the luck of already having some strong references within my department with the Smash Lab and within the other department of the University of Calabria, where the reference is Francesco Longo. So I'd just like to thank everybody for allowing me to listen and, and learn more than, than I thought I could in just a matter of an hour's time. Thank you.
Oh, I'd like to thank that young lady for promoting me to professor. Okay, so that's that. I just wanted to say one thing. Well, I, I work for the, I'm in the civil service in the federal government. So I just, you know, hang out. I've got a master's in math, so. Now, when you go to Unity, one of the, when I go to a scientific conference, a graphics conference, mostly Siggraph, what will happen is that the Unreal people will throw a beer bash, and the Unity three D people will throw a beer bash. And they'll have a competition to see who throws the biggest beer bash. The main problem is, is that those are two, three, six hundred pound gorillas fighting it out. And Unity three D tends to be more closed and Unreal seems to be more open, which is why you might have had the problem because they, they want you to program in C sharp, which is probably worse than C plus plus and stuff like that. I mean, if you're, if you're using something like that. And I'm on a Macintosh, so my philosophy is, "You really want me to program in C sharp instead of Fortran sixty six? How dare you?" You know, you know, you know, my, you know, my punch card deck collection is bigger than your punch card collection there, dudes. So, you know.
But at least seventy seven, John, not sixty six.
Oh, come on. I have a Fortran ninety compiler on my system. But then, you know, it's just, you know, I don't know. There's just something about, you know, just having a bunch of go-to statements just for laughs.
No, of course, I, I mean, I'm not partnering with any one of these companies. It's just, I could even say, I could have just said, "Game engine and programming language" instead of Unity Unreal or anything like that. I guess, this is my, my point of view, just using the tool you have at hand and you are good at to do something, accomplish something you want to do. But of course, it's not a matter of saying Unity or saying Unreal. And as you said, well, we already know what are the tendencies and who they are and all these things.
Yeah, but you gotta remember what's, what's happening is that, is that if you're, if you've got the money, you know, flowing into a game engine SmackDown, right? Then, then it's always going to retard the, you know, distributed simulations and stuff like that. Just the universe of distributed simulation. It all, it's, and it's, and it's still going. I mean, I, I hope I live to see the end of all this and real interoperability. So I'm planning to live to be a hundred, you know, and hope that that real interoperability hand happens before I croak. So, things and stuff. And here's an example. There's my phone. It's got a neural chip in it from Apple. So, you know, the open source people on, you know, like Keras people, you'll see papers and they're using Keras, Keras and machine learning and things like that. So there's open source versus proprietary in Apple. You can find tools that work on Apple. But then, Apple actually just simply said, "Well, why don't we just make our own machine learning type of, you know, chip? And we'll stuff the machine learning chip in there." So now you have to, you know, you, it's really hard to apply any type of A I and M L type technology in research. It just complicates it. And that's the, that's the problem with interoperability and stuff like that, you know.
Yeah, yeah. In our case, it was just an attempt this year. We were in a hurry, and we said, "Why not? Do we use something that it's already developed and it has this modularity that game engines offer? So you can just focus on a part of the project, and you can just take advantage of, for example, the graphic engine." And then we connected to, to join the Federation. And instead of having to program a word in Java, which could be also impossible, at least to me, I'm not software engineer, I'm industrial engineer with knowledge on, on the field, but just that. So that's why we said, "Okay, let's, let's do this." Of course, it has some impact on the simulation, and it could be further investigated, if it makes sense or not, as you said. And also, then you're mixing proprietary things with open, legally open things, like, I mean, like HLA, so that's true. But also, we must take into account that, for example, on the other hand, on the other side, sorry, you have pitch. Correct means I'm wrong, but for example, the code of pitch is not public in the end.
Yeah, because it's a commercial package.
It's a commercial package. So actually, of course, out of the event, you are just missing a commercial package with another commercial package. And just the key is that you know how to use both contemporary and how to connect them. So.
Yes, it's a good point. I beg your pardon. We have just twelve more minutes, but I suggest maybe we can even shorten. I would like to remember to everybody that in two thousand twenty-two, we'll have the event again organized. At this time, we'll be in Italy at Rome. That is a very nice location. In fact, probably the biggest event was here. We had over five hundred people for the IT plan. Last NATO CAX forum was other, was almost one thousand people. And so if you are willing to organize a track or a section or to propose something, not only to write a paper, I say to you, John, Rina, Caterina, Antonio, Marina is already the general chair of a mass conference, you are more than welcome. It's not necessary that you, I mean, it could be a tentative. If then it's successful, it will be a track. A track, it could be a subject on something, I don't know. A new, a new R T I evolution, you know, to make an example or any other.
Games.
This game, that's anyone. I suggest you take a look on the program. Eventually, if you want to do something like that, the best thing is to identify some sparring partner of another organization. Because in case when you are overloaded, maybe you can share. If you are, one is in Italy, and one in Spain. If one is in California, the other one is in Ontario, it's much more reliable, the organization. And maybe you have a different kind of networks that you can bring together to organize successfully this track. So you have seen there are many workshop and many conferences here. E M S S, H M S, Mass, D H S S, I Wish, S A S, etc. Identify that one, make a proposal. You are welcome to write to me, to Francesco, but even to the conference chair of the specific conference where you want to join. Make a proposal, just assure the where you want to join, make a proposal, just a short description, maybe two, three lines, the names and the reference of the person. And how would you like to manage it? Do you manage by invitation? Do you manage in some other way? We will be more welcome to create the development. Most of these conferences are born as a track and then evolved in a conference by themselves. So I feel it could be good.
Okay, so I started out earlier talking about Eurographics. And remember, there, there, they have people all over the place, you know, all over the world. But it's a, it's a heavy European computer graphics thing. So if we're going to do computer graphics and simulation with I3M, that's probably the organization to, to approach, just FYI and stuff. Also, I just thought I'd let you know that the, there's going to be a face-to-face meeting in November for the Bond Graph meeting or, you know, SES, their, is their, their Bond Graph type meeting. And so I'll let you know how that turns out in the sense of, you know, predicting what will it's a predictor of maybe what will happen in 2022, you know, in terms of you're, this is September 2022, so it's pretty far off. But there are, as, as conferences go back to face-to-face meetings and things like that, I'll try and keep track of it and I'll let you know.
Thank you, thank you very much. So if there is any amount of comment that you'd like to raise. Rina, thank you very much to you. We count on you for the next year, even to Caterina and Marina for sure is one of our pillars. I remember, go, Rina, Rina.
Oh, I'd just like to say thank you, thank you, Agostino, and thank you to everyone. I hope to see you next year live. It's been a pleasure listening to you and I'd like to see you in person. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I remind to everybody that this evening at 6 o'clock, I feel there is the welcome ceremony, bring some cocktail with you. We have a toast and you have even opened the bottle and you can even close then if it's just a beer.
Yeah, and I'll expect in Rome, I'll expect a different color.
Sure, why not?
Like blue, or maybe gold. Oh, wait a minute, can you put like little Hello Kitty things in, on the, no, never mind. Okay.
Okay, John. So you are an outie boy, John. We see later, thank you very much.
Okay, everybody's a really good time. Enjoy.
Peace and love.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marina, thank you, Caterina, thank you, Rina, Xavier, John, Agostino.
Yes. Everybody pat themselves on the back. Okay, yeah.
Thank you to you, ciao ciao.